Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town Council meeting of June 6, 2023. I'm going to start with roll call. Counselor Chapel.
Present.
Counselor McGuire.
Present.
Counselor Meany.
Present.
And I am Counselor Carter, and to my right is Town Manager Nate Rudy. Would everyone please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance? My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is our consent agenda, and I would like to move the Town Council meeting minutes of May 16th off the consent agenda because I have one change.
Okay.
Any other... okay, so I'm looking for a motion for the consent agenda to cover the minutes for the executive session of May 16th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Any... oops, no discussion. Krista?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
I'm also yes. Now, I'm looking for a motion for the council to approve the Town Council meeting minutes of May 16th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
And my one change is on page eight, item number, second paragraph to the end of the first section before the action items. You get there. Page eight.
Eight, okay.
And that is, actually, I believe was Counselor Chapel's comments, not mine.
Thank you.
That's it. Any other changes? Krista?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
And I'm also yes. Next item on the agenda is public comments of non-agenda items. Limit three minutes per person. Comments are intended for information sharing, not discussion. Comments in excess of three minutes are welcome at the end of the agenda prior to adjournment. Is there anyone here to make public comments on non-agenda items? Please introduce yourself and say where you live, please.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Lynn Gallagher of Nine Foster Hill Road. I know my time's limited, so my comments will be very brief, but I wanted to come out to thank Counselor Carter. This is her last official meeting as a town counselor. She's served for the past six years, and we could go on and on about the things she's had a hand in over the past six years, but I want to say thank you. I know the sacrifices, the time, the dedication, and all the behind-the-scenes work that you've done over the past six years. So I came out to publicly say congratulations on your retirement. Hopefully, it's temporary, but thank you for serving the people of Gray.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Anyone else with comments on non-agenda items? Seeing any in chat? No hands raised, so I will close public comments on non-agenda items. Are there any adjustments to the agenda this evening?
I have none.
Next item on our agenda is the presentation, and we have a guest from GP COG who will be sharing the short-term rental software being offered by GP COG.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. My name's Paul Johnson. I'm the Economic Development Director for the Greater Portland Council of Governments. And if you don't know what that is, pretty much every town in Cumberland County pays us a fee to become a member of the Greater Portland Council of Governments, and we're a regional organization that helps bring towns together, help come up with solutions on a more regional level, and get everybody to, in the same room, to convene about some of the local issues that are very different from town to town, but also similar. As a result of that, we have, in Cumberland County, we have about, we have about 30 towns, and they're in different various stages of either regulating or enforcing, or at least exploring some sort of short-term rental knowledge base. And if you look some, like, for instance, Portland has a licensing structure that has, I believe, eight different tiers of licenses that can run anywhere from $80 a year to $2,000 a year to operate a short-term rental. I believe Cape Elizabeth is, essentially, has a licensing program that charges about $200 to $300 a year for a resident that runs Airbnb or VRBO. And so with paying attention to short-term rentals comes the issue of enforcement. And currently, right now, there are national-level softwares that are charged, they're pretty heavy yearly subscription charges. For example, Portland pays approximately $80,000 a year. South Portland pays approximately $80,000 a year. Freeport is, excuse me, not Freeport, Thelmoth is somewhere in the neighborhood of $13,000 to $15,000 a year. So it's expensive software, and what GP COG has done in an effort to bring more direct value to our member communities is we've developed our own software that we are offering up for our member communities to essentially use completely free of charge until May 31st of next year. And then if it works out, enter into some licensing agreement or user agreement with GP COG at a rate that we predict would be about 75% discounted off of what you would get at a typical software. So it is not our intention to, quote, "make lots of money" here. It's actually our intention to take a problem that everybody is at various stages of and offer a solution that perhaps we could all do it the same way and save a ton of money. And frankly, GP COG might be willing and in the position to take on the burden of enforcement, so it doesn't burden your staff. So I will show you our dashboard right now and some of the basics. The, it's an introductory screen. This is the town of Thelmoth. Thelmoth is, this is an example of somebody, a town that uses some of the national software, but this is all 63 licenses that are currently active in Thelmoth. So this is a snapshot of Thelmoth as about three weeks ago, maybe five weeks ago. And as a staff member, you can log in, and you have a pretty easy user interface on what the current licenses are in Thelmoth. From there, you can edit your license, you can download a spreadsheet, you can do all of the typical stuff that you would expect staff could do with licenses in order to search the license database, so to speak. What our software does is it goes out every morning at 6:00 in the morning, and it steals all the information off VRBO and Airbnb. And it cross-references that information with the licenses that are currently at Town Hall. And essentially, what it will do then is it will take those 6:00 in the morning, it will take all of that information in the background, cross-reference it with your licenses, and it will give you a violation page. And so if you look here at this Thelmoth snapshot, again, this is not live. I'm using Thelmoth as a test case. They have 14 violations. So as of a month ago, if we pretended this was a month ago, they had 14 violations. They have 63 licenses. There's about 80 out there on Airbnb and VRBO, and there's 14 that the software has flagged as violations. From there, if you are a staff member, you can print a violation notice with a click of the button. I'm going to click a longer version of the violation notice simply because one of the options you can have it do is actually come up and print a violation notice that has evidence with the violation notice. So if you look here, it pops up. It's on Thelmoth Letterhead. I'll see if I can zoom in for the, I can't. But it's on Thelmoth Letterhead. It has links to the listing. It actually has photos. And it will send off a violation notice to the resident that is running the short-term rental and say, hey, we've noticed you're in violation. Can you contact us? One of the opportunities here is all of this could be centralized at GP COG. Instead of passing some administrative burden on to staff, as part of our agreement, we could do all of this in the background and maybe touch base with the Town of Gray every month and say, hey, here are the three people that haven't responded, or here are the, these are the violation notices we've sent, and you can do what you will with them. So one of these, benefit of being a regional organization is if we can get enough of our member communities to be okay with the software, we could centralize this and make the Town of Gray not feel like they have to hire another full-time employee or feel like there's a burden for the current town clerk. On the front-facing end, so I, Krista and I were talking right before this meeting. It sounds like right now Gray is in the process of asking people to come up to Town Hall and register their Airbnbs. We have streamlined that to a section on your website, so we could tomorrow, as soon as tomorrow, we could embed essentially the same process that you were doing with paper and with the town clerk. We could embed this into the Town of Gray website, and you could start having people actually fill this out electronically. And then on the back end, we could start taking notice of that and actually applying it to the Gray account. So if I, you guys don't have a whole lot going on, because I don't know your licenses, but here is Gray. So here approximately, there's approximately 60 listings right now in Gray. We could start taking that front end that I just showed you, and we could actually start populating this, very similar to what you just saw in Thelmoth. Again, I'm not here to suggest you charge X, Y, or Z to your residents. That's not what I'm here for. What I'm really here for is saying, hey, if you as a councilor are starting to tackle this issue and exploring, hey, are we going to enforce this? Are we going to charge a licensing fee? And if, even if you're not, and you're continuing, let's say, your status quo for the next year or two, we could actually start using this process and this software with charging somebody $0. But if you have them at Town Hall, let's say you have a stack of 20 of them right now, we could start modernizing that and plugging it in and actually start comparing it like I just did with Thelmoth. So this is in your court for how, what step you are comfortable taking. But the good news is, is you could take a year to take, if you, if you wanted to use the software, and you start seeing applicable uses for it, and you see value in it, you have until May 31st of next year to kind of up how much you are going to use it. And perhaps this is the gateway to becoming more formal with the licenses, or perhaps not. But that's, I mean, that's something for you guys to explore. Very quick presentation, but I think you get the gist of it, and I would love to take questions if anybody has any.
Questions for Paul. Dan?
Yeah, thank you for the information.
Sure.
You know, we get, we hear complaints. We get people that approach us. We really had no idea. And so we started just the registration part to just try and get a handle on where and how often it's happening. So, I mean, just the snapshot you gave us there has given us, you know, more information than we've ever had.
Yep.
I don't think, you know, we haven't discussed it. We haven't talked about the need for licensing or enforcement or any of those things. But it is nice to know how much of it's happening in town, and obviously, there's concentration of it in certain places, which doesn't surprise me.
Sure. Yeah, and if you, like I said, if you have a, if you as a councilor, this might be a decision at the staff level, if you wanted us to take the little pile that's up in the clerk's office right now, I could populate the software, give you guys a username and login, and you can just, you can start playing around with it.
Yeah.
So.
Any other questions? Yeah, I think we're just in the registry standpoint, and so it would be interesting to see what we've received for registrations versus what's actually out there. So that's a lot faster than our staff having to do it.
Right. I know in the memo you provided us ahead of time, GP COG's also offering some, some planning work to talk about once we get to the point of whether or not we would like an ordinance that actually has some sort of guidelines, you know, how we, how we'd go about planning that, and I, can you just speak a little bit to what GP COG could offer in regards to...
Sure. Yeah, it's, the planning aspect is a little bit more in the realm of my planning director, right? But because we're witnessing, in my mind, we have four, quote, "leaders" in Cumberland County, right? So we have South Portland, Cape Elizabeth, Thelmoth, and Portland. They're learning a lot of lessons right now, and I think they've learned what isn't working. And so we can certainly help take those four ordinances slash licenses that are on the books and help fit, you know, what, what, what fits for Gray, right? Because certainly, you're not looking at a Portland-level ordinance, right? It sounds to me like you would probably have one tier of license, perhaps two if there was a corporate-owned, let's say, there's a corporate-owned property, then perhaps you have a second-tier license. But those are, that's all language we could help provide with you, work with your staff to get feedback from the public. You know, it's funny that Gray's taken the approach that you have, because one of the, one of the things I think Krista and I sent to you yesterday was, you know, I, this is one of the things we're suggesting to people that have done nothing so far, is to simply say, hey, just start registering them, right? Just as a communication tool. If you look here, it's all Larrabee Road. It's all, you know, it's all Highland Lake. It's all that fun stuff. It's, nothing anybody doesn't know. But yeah, to answer your question, we can bring the lesson learns there. We can bring some of the cookie cutter language, so to speak, and say, you know, hey, let's workshop this and make it specific to Gray.
Dan?
Yeah, and I'm curious, for instance, fireworks is a good one. So, you know, do the people that are renting these houses have any idea that Gray has a fireworks ordinance? Probably not. And so that's where some of the complaints come from usually. So just knowing that we have these addresses, just being able to send people a copy of that ordinance and simply to inform them is going to be, would be a plus for us. I'm curious, within the confines of this, what other, what is sort of the information you collect? Do you collect a sort of time of year available, or...
Those are all things that we can customize per town. So if you came to us and said, hey, you know, for instance, we've been speaking with South Portland, and South Portland actually wants the software to take where it's located. They have different, their ordinance, their short-term rental varies by zone. So we actually have, we could actually take this, and depending what zone they're in, they have a different level ordinance. The software can do all that for you, right? Those are the things that we could customize as well. You know, and to your point, I think when people hear enforcement of short-term rental, as a property owner, you might say, hey, you know, that's my property. I can do what I will. I think the incurred costs aren't that a staff member is going to be knocking on your door trying to kick you out of your short-term rental, but to your point, there's higher turnover of trash, right? There is a, there's more complaints, noise complaints. There's lack of awareness. So if you charge a $50 to $100 licensing fee for a year, maybe you're paying for that type of communication that you're going to provide for the temporary resident, so to speak, that might be living in Gray for a week. So I think it's important to just say publicly, the enforcement doesn't mean, you know, we're going to knock on people's doors and, you know, with a badge, so to speak.
Right.
There's just a lot of other stuff with it. But yeah, we could, that's all data, like, if that you were interested in, we can customize that, particularly for this. This front end that we could embed into the registration page, so I'll just throw my... Of course, it's my address in Scarborough, so it might not come up, because it's... This is all stuff that, you know, I'm sure you have this on your current form, but you could say, hey, can you guys have a, can you have a couple date fields that say when you, when you expect to be renting this?
Yep.
Yeah. But that's all information we could easily...
Good. Thank you.
And just to be clear, this is software that we could offer for residents to go on and directly register?
Yeah, so what I'm, yeah, so this software has two parts to it. This part is your staff. You're, I would not recommend giving this to your residents, simply because then you're going to have neighbors throwing water balloons at each other or calling directly about any sort of complaints, right? That's the staff end, and then this would be, hey, the front end is, this end would be, yeah, your registration page. Yeah, so I think right now you're having people march up to Town Hall and fill out a, you know, an eight-by-10 about their current Airbnb.
I believe so.
Yeah. So you could have this open at Town Hall. You could embed this on your website, all that sort of stuff. And as a side note, one, one community is discussing actually having publicly available the licensed page, not the violation page, but the, the actual licenses. Because if you think about it, licenses are public information. If I went to town, if I went to the town clerk and asked to see the licenses, as a resident of Gray, I'm entitled to see that. So there are, you know, you could go down certain publicly available information if you wanted to. But yeah, this would be, in my mind, for what you guys are doing, you could embed this tomorrow in your website and start collecting them that way. And then in the background, I can have them interact with the software, so at least a staff member can click back and forth.
Great. Thank you very much.
I just had one, one quick. Just what kind of inputs would you need from town staff to get this started? Do you just need a contact person, or...
Yeah, whoever, whoever the, the staff person that manages the easy updates to your website, right? So I assume you guys might have some sort of scrolling updates, or your front page might be updated periodically with what's happening. We could start, we could start there with, hey, here's a link. You can post a link on your social media if you guys have social media newsletter. And then it can also live in your code enforcement page, or you can make it somewhere a little bit more public since you're trying to get the word out.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks, Paul.
Yep, not a problem.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, guys. Thanks for having me.
The council will consider it and get back to you.
I love a good town meeting, but I'm going to go home.
Yeah, that's all right. Understandable.
Well, it only gets better.
Well, I know.
I was wanting to pour a bit there, so I understand.
Good night. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, and this is for the second reading to review proposed changes to the Vehicle Use and Weight Restriction Ordinance, Chapter 501. Changes include updating language for the Shaker Road segment, adjusting the maximum weight limit for exempt trucks, increasing the period when seasonal road postings can be in effect, changing the appeals process to go before the town manager, and removing language regarding DOT enforcement. Are there members of the public who wish to speak to this public hearing? Please identify yourself and make sure you log in and identify where you live, please.
My name is Dave Wilkinson. I like to say that I live in the Gray area. A couple of concerns that I have this evening, much of it has been touched upon in the previous meeting, but I wanted to reinforce what was brought up and perhaps bring up a few other items in regards to the road restrictions and diverting heavier traffic, heavier vehicles. For instance, diverting heavier vehicles to the bypass versus using the old 26, which was built, as we've already brought out, built to state specs, and it's handled heavy traffic successfully for years and years. My concern is if we relocate this heavy vehicle traffic to the bypass, as again has been touched upon, many times a day, it could be time-consuming and a roundabout way to go from point A to point B for many businesses in the town. Diverting heavy vehicles from Short Mayo Road to the Depot Road is more than just time-consuming. It's expensive to the truck owners in tire scuffing and stressing the truck universals, to name just a few things. And because of more than, it's actually because of, as my nephew had brought out, the degrees, it's less, it's actually more than a 90-degree turn heading east from Depot Road onto 115. Also aggravating to the truckers is that this turn onto Short Mayo Road, many take that turn from 115 onto Short Mayo only to have to turn around and go back onto 115 because the sign is in the wrong place. The sign is on the right in the woods, so that the truck that's turning from 115 onto Mayo Road doesn't see that sign till they've already committed to going onto Mayo Road. So they turn around in somebody's driveway. If they're going to follow the rule of law, they turn a truck, a big truck around and go back onto 115 so that they can go down to Depot. So just a point, you might want to get that sign located so somebody could actually see it. If you run a business here in town, the old adage is time is money, and these, these changes, diverting the traffic and also this sharp turn, it goes beyond time and money. It goes to repairs and downtime. It's very tough on vehicles, anybody that has a big rig and knows anything about it. Taking a very sharp turn like that with a load on is extremely difficult. And it's not safe, because the traffic, as it does everywhere, is going faster than it should. On 115, it's no different, and some of these trucks take a long time to get out of the way of traffic and turn. They just don't, it's, it's, it's the capacity of what they're working with. It makes it very difficult. Now, in speaking of time and money, we'll speak about the money. The town, this town, like all other towns, no different, takes thousands and thousands of dollars of excise tax from local businesses that have heavier equipment, heavier trucks. Now, it should go without saying that we should have a voice in any changes that go, that take place in finding our way through the village or through the town, because we pay so much for this, for the use of the roads. We also, speaking about the excise tax, we, it's another, an irritant to me, and I know it is to others, that we pay a great deal for this excise tax. More often than not, we have nine, nine-and-a-half months a year that we can use most of our secondary roads, and we have to wait for the posted signs to come off, but we do pay excise tax based on a 12-month year. So that's something that is, it sticks in the craw to a lot of business owners. It's been touched on, but funneling all this heavy traffic to and from the bypass versus the short Route 26 means an overload of traffic coming and going through all the lights and all the intersections of Gray Village. Now, to me, and I think to many others that have spoken, it doesn't add up that it would accomplish what the bypass was intended to do, and that is to lessen the congestion, lessen the traffic in the village corridor. My feeling is that posting and diverting heavier vehicles from these roads, much in part due to some who have voiced their concerns in regards to speed and safety and even serenity in the village sector. I think, quite honestly, it's somewhat of a knee-jerk reaction that's been made and has not really been thought out well to make these changes on restrictions of road usage because of these reasons. Case in point, on several occasions, and I've lived in this town all my life, several occasions, and I've lived on Route 26, we'll have a pack, in the summertime, you'll always have a pack of these ninja motorcycles that will go through and up 26 altogether in a pack. And these things are screaming like chainsaws. They're all over the road, and they're going 60 miles an hour or more up 26 on Old Route 26. Now, this isn't safe, and it's not serene either. So my question is, should all motorcycles be limited to the bypass? It's a safety issue. It's a noise issue. It's a speed issue. My final concern is that I feel the town should do more and concern itself more with, and even perhaps seeking counsel in regards to the main turnpike authority. This is a stickler to me, and I know it is, but it bothers some others, the amount of vehicle traffic that's diverted through this village, either to the turnpike entrance going south or from the turnpike exit going north via Route 100, right out here. They simply get off or get on in Auburn, and they can avoid that toll, and it's a heavy toll for truckers. They avoid that toll in New Gloucester. Now, regardless of what the MTA has made claims, you would be terribly naive if you think it's not a major contributor to the village vehicle problems every day. And it's not all traffic coming from New Gloucester. If you go out here and look, you'll find a lot of commercial vehicles coming north, coming from north of New Gloucester. Why aren't they using the turnpike in Auburn? Recently, a young boy was hit by a tractor-trailer truck on Route 100 in Gray while exiting a school bus with its lights on, flashing... a school bus with its lights on flashing right up here on Route 100, and that was indeed a tragic event, a traumatic event for this boy and for his family. But it does add to the concerns about speed and traffic safety, no question about that. But I, you know, it's something, I have seen this particular company truck or trucks in the village before. I've seen them coming and going, and it raises a question. Why is a Farmington-based company with tractor-trailers going through Gray Village heading north on Route 100 instead of entering or staying on the turnpike and go north in Gray? Might it be, like so many others, they're avoiding these tolls in New Gloucester, and they're causing a severe congestion in Gray Village? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to add public comment?
Adam Wilkinson, 86 Yarmouth Road. I'm sure most everybody is aware at this point after the last meeting, I went through what I would consider a shell-shark period for a few days, especially learning at the end of the meeting that the ordinance that I was actually here to speak about was already in place. Took me a few days to get my thoughts together, and Council Chair was nice enough to reach out to me by email to see if I had any further questions based on the last meeting. And I did have one question for her, and I'll get to that in just a minute, but it, the information that I presented at the last meeting was made apparently clear, should have been done probably a year ago. And there's only one thing I can contribute that to, and it's not because we're not passionate, it's not because we wouldn't have been here. I can tell you, I didn't know. I said that last meeting, I've said it all along, we have not been included in this conversation. By whatever means, I'm not sure. I don't know where the things were mailed, I can't tell you, but if we had known, we'd have been here. The question I raised to Council Chair about the weight posting already being placed, like I said, she'd replied at the last meeting being October 5th of 2022. This is at the end of last meeting. Excuse me. She reached out to me by email as I had gotten to a minute ago, and I replied, I only had one question, and I just wanted to make sure that I heard her correctly at the end of the meeting, that it was in place as of October 5th, 2022. She was out of town, so Counselor Chappell got back to me, and her answer was that it had been in place as of 11:15, 2022. So I kind of have a question, which date is the accurate date?
The first read was the October date, the second read was November 15th.
So that was-
And 30 days from that point is when ordinances take effect.
So 12:15 is actually when it went into effect.
Correct.
Okay. Also, the town manager, he reached out to me by email because we had, we had asked about what the mailing lists were, and I did receive those from him, and he sent me three lists. One of the lists was the affected businesses in town, one of the lists was for the affected people and/or businesses on Short Mayo, and the other one would have been for Short Shaker Road. There's 184 entries on the affected businesses list, there's 184, there's some repeats, so let's just say 170 for conversation sake. Does it not seem odd to anybody in this room, other than me, that, to my knowledge, that other than the half-page of paper that I was able to smuggle into a workshop through the former Public Works Director and one business that showed up at one of the meetings, does it seem odd that no one else showed up other than the one guy, the one business owner?
During the, excuse me, during the workshops, we had actually a substantial number of people in on the Zoom, especially for Short Mayo.
Yeah.
And we had a couple of residents on Brown Street and a couple other that did participate as well.
Yeah, I'd heard something, I think the number was 35, maybe something like that at one of the meetings for the, for the Short Mayo, maybe something like that, but I'd heard there was one business. I was just kind of curious who that was, because I can tell you, it wasn't anybody in this room, that's why I was curious who it would be, because somehow they knew about it.
I believe it was Main Tennis.
Main Tennis.
Main Tennis for Short Mayo, and then we received a phone call from one of the businesses after we mailed the second set of letters that the DOT required us to send.
Whoops, sorry. Lost my spot right there. Like I said, so Main Tennis and Track, obviously they're on that street, they should have been notified as well, but I can, I can speak for some of the other larger contractors, truckers, pit owners that have been severely impacted by that posting, which I said, which isn't necessarily Shaker Road, but it all kind of runs together here. They were unaware that this was even happening as well until they saw the signs go up. So there was a lack of communication from the start on this thing. The other thing that I noticed about the list that I had received from the town manager regarding the Mayo Road affected parties, the addresses on the list of that mailing list start at 300 and they go up from there. The addresses on the Short Mayo Road, which is the one that's been posted for 10,000, are 2 through 60. So I received the wrong list of notified parties. Now, I don't know if that's the list that was actually used. If it was, then the people on the wrong end of the road got the mail. But you can see how one would start to surmise that-
I'm gonna just interject there, I believe the residents on the other Short Shaker actually had approached us initially for the weight limit, and they had obtained signatures from every person living on Short Mayo, and so the additional notification went to the rest of Mayo Road.
So that's the end of mail that's up in New Gloucester, on the New Gloucester end?
So we notified everyone. The Short Shaker residents are the ones who brought the issue to us initially.
All right, I just, I didn't see any-
And they presented a petition that included everyone on the road.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't see that in the mailing, so I was assuming that it was either an error or an oversight. Either way, it kind of planted a seed in my mind where, you know, maybe someone could misconstrue that maybe there was some communication problems here.
Right.
My name is on all of our properties in town. It's on the deeds, it's on the tax bills, and to this day, like I said, I haven't been notified of this stuff. I have not received these mailings. I can tell you, the town knows my address, my P.O. box, when it comes tax time. I always receive the tax bills. I haven't missed one yet. So if I'm getting those, I should have been receiving these other things. In my opinion, the town has fallen short on the communication portion leading up to this point. Like I said, I feel like the cat's out ahead of the horse, or the horse is way behind the cat kind of thing on this deal. We should have been notified, we would have been involved. I've spoken with Counselor McGuire a couple times about it. I really do feel like something was left out. For whom it may concern, I took my truck one day, I was coming back from West Gray, and I said, "You know what, I'm gonna time the difference to go up the bypass versus going Short Shaker Road." I said, "How hard can it be?" So I sat at my stopwatch at True Value, and I came down to Gray Center, and it took a minute 32 seconds. This is Wednesday at 4 o'clock in the afternoon, just a normal day, wasn't rush hour, but it was getting it. To do that same trip from True Value back through the bypass into Gray Center was 5 minutes and 22 seconds. That's a four-minute difference, so at my last presentation, I said 10 minutes a round trip. I was actually pretty close without even measuring it. We have a pretty good hunch for these things, especially when you're driving trucks like we do all the time. At the last meeting, Counselor Chappell stated that it's, the town needs to protect public safety of the town and be a concern for all of its citizens. My question is, who is out there to protect the businesses in town? Who support, live, and add to this town? Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much, Adam. Are there anyone else here to add public comment?
Brad Skilling, 129 Mountain View Road. I'd like a clarification. At the last meeting, I asked if I had a subcontractor haul me something into my pit. I was told that they would be fined, and I wanted, I wanted to verify that, that that was a-
No, they would be fined to do that. They are not being fined. I'm gonna read actually.
They would be okay.
Yeah.
All right. Because it doesn't happen often, but sometimes somebody comes in and they want to sell something because they want a backhaul, so they don't want to-
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure for my, for my sake and for my generation's sake. I mean, I'm a third, I'm a third-generation excavator, fourth generation right here.
Yeah. I'm gonna actually read right from the ordinance because I know there was a lot of confusion about that.
Okay.
But under the exempt list, it says, "Vehicles owned or operated by parties living on or and/or operating a business on a specific road or road segment listed are exempt."
Yeah.
"Vehicles accessing properties or businesses located on a specific road or road segment listed in the chapter for the purpose of making deliveries or otherwise performing activities related to the vehicle's owner's business are exempt." In addition to that, there is a list of specific items that are exempt, so patrolling, hauling groceries, bulk milk, bulk feed, there's a whole list of them.
Yeah, I'm right, okay.
And in addition to that-
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, in addition to that, I just want to be very clear and on the record, in addition to that, there is an additional permit process available to those who need to use the road outside a normal business, who would normally not be allowed to use it due to the weight restriction.
All right. My second thing is, I went to Memorial Day Parade, two-thirds of those vehicles were over the weight limit. Do they have to pay a waiver fee if they want to be in the parade?
There's, there's no fee for that.
I was gonna say, because it gets to a point that, I mean, there's a community event, and I'm looking at it, and I'm thinking, well, we got, he's overweight, he's overweight, he's overweight. Is there gonna be a fee that these, that the Legion or these, these volunteers have to pay to-
And that's why that process is in there, in the ordinance for that type of activity.
All right, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other public comment?
Scott Dugus, Yarmouth. I'm just curious if any of you guys did go up and look at those intersections on Short Mayo Road to see what we're talking about?
Yeah, the Depot Road intersection is actually, Depot Road is a DOT road, and so I have asked the town manager after the first public hearing to refer that, those comments and concerns to the Maine Department of Transportation. It is their road, so they would be the ones who would be responsible to make sure that it meets the standard for turning vehicles.
It just doesn't make-
It's not a, it's not a local road for us to, to manage, but-
Okay, so basically you're taking some traffic off from the people on Short Depot, on Short Mayo Road, and giving the people on Depot Road all the traffic?
We did have, we did notify those living on Depot Road that would be impacted. We had one Depot Road resident attend one of our workshops. He was actually outside of the area, he wasn't in the impacted area, but no other residents provided comment. And just to clarify, Short Mayo Road is a local road, so we are responsible for paying for that road. Depot Road is a state-owned road.
Okay. Just, just seems like going backwards, but whatever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Scott Young. Actually, I live in New Gloucester, but we own property, 155 to 169 Lewiston Road. Mine is pretty simple. I'm just wondering where you came up with the 10,000 pounds and why you're using that versus maybe, like when you post a road, it's 23,000.
Dan, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, we went back and forth about this quite a bit, actually, for that stretch of road, and couldn't find a lot of information, I guess is the best way to put it. When we talked to MDOT about Short Shaker Road, they were pretty clear about the weight for what, what we should be using for a weight, and we've had a conversation about going back and looking at the ordinance to see if we should standardize that or not.
So the 23,000 pounds is an MDOT weight restriction. We actually passed the ordinance with a 26,000 pound weight restriction for Short Shaker. They subsequently came back to us and asked us to use the 23,000 pounds, and that's actually what this first and second reading is about, is simply that revision to an existing ordinance. The 10,000 is on just May, Short Mayo and Marie Street, which are smaller, local-owned roads that are not built in any way, shape, or form to handle large vehicles.
Great, thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Before, oh-
I've got one more thing.
Okay.
Please.
Could I request one thing, potentially? I would love to see how many letters we should have received if everything had gone correctly as far as starting back at the beginning of this.
You want to see the two letters?
I would like however many letters we were supposed to have, I would love to see what they were and see what the wording of them is, actually see it, because it would be the first time I've seen it. That would be wonderful. Please, thank you.
Any other comments? I did have a couple of residents who reached out to the town, so I'll share their feedback now, since it was via email. We received a letter from Dave and Ruth Peace of 9 Brown Street on behalf of themselves and the other tenants that have repeatedly reached out to the town to address the noise, speed, and volume of heavy trucks using Brown Street and are in support of the weight limit on Short Shaker. Jeff, who is a resident on Short Shaker, states that "The endless dump trucks and trailer trucks that come through here with their jake brakes is ridiculous. All hours of the day and night, loud noises from their exhaust is way too much, especially through the center. In speaking about reducing speeding, people are putting their life in their own hands when trying to cross, use the crosswalk in front of Morrison Center, which is used a lot. I have watched many times children and parents trying to cross and almost be run over. The speeding through Shaker Road needs to stop." As I mentioned earlier, we did notify the Short Mayo Road residents, but they have, we have a petition that can be shared with the 45 signatures on it. Jen Dupuy, who wanted to be here this evening but whose flight was delayed, reached out to me. She is blind, and she lives on Wayne Avenue and walks throughout the village with her children, and she cannot, as she cannot drive. She has expressed strong support for reducing speeds, rerouting large heavy vehicles where possible, and working to reduce the through traffic to make it safer for her and others. And then I've had multiple residents who have spoken to me since the last hearing, expressing support for the weight limit, especially after the horrible accident which happened about two miles from the Village Center. If you looked at any of the Facebook postings, there was a flood of residents insisting that something be done to reduce the number of trucks going through town and the speed at which they travel. To the comment about the toll diversion, we are well aware of that. We actually commissioned a diversion study, a diversion and avoidance study, and I add the word avoidance to the study parameters because the MTA insists that there is not a diversion problem occurring, and that is because they consider diversion someone leaving the highway and then re-entering the highway. And as you very clearly state, and we 100% agree with you, there are many people leaving the highway in Auburn and never get back on the highway, so they don't consider that a diversion. That is called an avoidance. The diversion study is available to anyone. I just recently reshared it with Representative- I just recently reshared it with Representative Annie Graham, who reached out to us after that horrible accident on Route one hundred, to ask for her assistance once again. We, in that diversion and avoidance study, we found approximately two thousand vehicles a day traveling from Auburn to Wyndham, and they never use the highway. And therefore, the MTA, again, doesn't feel that that's a diversion. They could easily get on at the Auburn interchange and get off at the Gray interchange, and it would actually save them a substantial amount of time, but they don't want to pay the toll. I think anyone who's lived here, and I have lived here for thirty-two years myself, knows how to avoid the tolls. So we know there's diversion, we're diverting. So I couldn't agree with you more. We have had meetings with the MTA, and we will continue to push that on behalf of all the residents. Did anyone else have any public comments to share? I see no hands up or chat comments, so I will close the public hearing. I'm looking for a motion for the council to approve the changes, proposed changes to the vehicle use and weight restriction ordinance, Chapter five oh one.
So moved?
Second. And this allows us to open this for discussion among the council. And I shared some of my comments already through that diversion study comment. But I wanted to add that as far as the extra intersection, I think actually most of the trucks that are traveling who are headed up Yarmouth end up hitting the same intersection. It'd be the same number, it's just different intersections. One piece that I think is being overlooked is that when trucks are traveling from the bypass area to Yarmouth Road, they have, they cannot use Brown. And because they cannot make that turn, they end up having to take a right-hand turn, and then they end up sitting at that left-hand turn light trying to get on Yarmouth. And that creates quite a bit of congestion in the center of town. The bypass route, there will be signal assisted turns, so there is no stopping. You wait till you get your green light, and then you just go. Short Shaker has two schools, a church, a wedding venue, two farm stands, several other service businesses, the Morrison Center residents in a day program, and a funeral home, in addition to the eighty residents. So I think the weight restriction helps some businesses and maybe doesn't help others. But we are considering the businesses on the road. There are exemptions for those who operate on the road, and we certainly do not want to impact either the Skillings or Wilkinson's businesses that are on Short Shaker. You guys will be exempt, and hopefully, if you have any issues with that, you can let us know. As Adam mentioned, and we did provide the timeline in the packet, that is on packet page, starting on packet page thirty, excuse me, wait a minute, fifteen. You can see all of the lists of all of the meetings and workshops, the videos for those are online. There is one comment in there asking about whether or not it passed on October fifth, twenty twenty-one, and it did go into effect, as I stated earlier, with the December fifteenth date. There was some conversation about the number of support. If you look at our comp plan, and I know that we have received feedback indicating people don't believe the comp plan was supported, that maybe people voted without reading it. But once again, we had over five hundred residents who came out and spoke to us directly, or filled out surveys and participated in the process for the comp plan. We had an additional two hundred participate in the village visioning session. We've had multiple parents indicate, as recently as this July, in those village visioning sessions, that they will not allow their children to walk from Short Shaker Schools over to the other areas of the village due to the unsafe conditions. The comp plan top prior, one of the top priorities include focus on moving people safely through Gray and getting around town via walking, biking, car, and public transportation. So it's all users. We purposely set the comp plan up for a vote on November twentieth, twenty twenty, because we knew it, due to the presidential aspect, that we would get the most voters and get a clear feedback. We had a record turnout of five thousand three hundred and forty-five voters. Four thousand and seventeen of them supported the comp plan. That's a seventy-five percent approval rate. We don't get votes like that. I shared the feedback I had from the residents. There are fourteen gravel pits plus numerous additional heavy equipment businesses in town. We're well aware of that. I've lived here for thirty-two years, and I have contributed substantially to the community, as have some other residents who've only lived here a couple of years. And all of the voices matter to us. I may not have a hauling business, but I've ridden in and actually have a power lineman's truck parked in my driveway right now. And those are just as big as dump trucks. While they are exempt when providing service to a road, they're not while they're traveling elsewhere. And as my husband has said on more than one occasion, every town has posted roads. It's just part of the job. You learn where you can go and where you can't go. And we're asking these heavy vehicles to avoid three roads out of all of the roads in Gray, for the safety of all of the residents, and especially the most vulnerable ones. I have a fundamental disagreement with those who believe Gray will never be more than just a stop off the highway. That viewpoint, in my opinion, has locked us into current infrastructure and the design for far too long. And I do truly believe that the Main Street and Yarmouth Road projects, the route removal, this small weight restriction, which I understand is not small to everyone, and the future reduction of speed limits, if we could ever get the MTA to listen to our proposal about restructuring their tolls. And we took their data and gave them a proposal, which did not, in our opinion, impact their revenue. And it was a way that they could just easily help us out, and the board didn't even take it up for consideration. But we will keep trying. And we encourage you all to please write to your legislators on our behalf and on the residents of Gray's behalf to ask them to do something about it. I believe that all of this work will transform the village and will create a place that will be more welcoming for businesses, more housing, and more bike ped activity, which actually supports businesses. And hopefully, it will become a place to stop and spend time rather than drive through. We recently had two buses from the Saco Recreation Department that brought two buses of seniors to come here and walk in our village because of the new Nordic walking program that was started by a resident who's only lived here for two years and now has almost eighty seniors walking in the village area. So I do believe that we are gaining some steam there. Other comments?
Yeah, I want to talk to all of the things that were said tonight, or not talk to, but I guess respond to, maybe provide some information for. But before I get going, on a broader, more general way, I've been on the council now for six years. I have collected signatures to be on the ballot for three more. The most frustrating events that I attend are meetings with the Maine Department of Transportation and the Maine Turnpike Authority. There have been times when I've wanted to bite chunks out of this desk, because it is a real David and Goliath situation. We have no authority, we have no power. And all we can do is continue to work, to demand that they do what they're supposed to do to help our community develop, and basically do their job. When they turned over Main Street to us, they paved it, striped it, said it looks great, it's yours. Underneath Main Street, the entire stormwater system needs to be replaced. The state law requires that MDOT turn the street over to us in good condition. Doesn't just mean paving. It took us over two years and a few thousand dollars to actually have the stormwater system videotaped before we could embarrass MDOT to the point where they had, where they said, yep, that's on us. And they plan sometime, hopefully in my lifetime, to come and replace that stormwater system. And when they do, it will give the Water District an opportunity to replace lines that are seventy-five-plus years old in some places. We've had complaints about the water down Coal Farms Way for years. So I'm just as frustrated as anybody else with the pace of this. I would not have thought in a million years that I could spend six years of my life on the town council and not be able to get some of these things done. The Maine Turnpike Authority is a dictatorship. They rule that right of way with an iron fist. They don't give a damn about us. And getting on their slate to just get them to pay attention is, well, you heard Sandy, they didn't even bother to take up our proposal that we made to them. When the bypass was built, anybody who's lived here a long time knows that the bypass we got is not the bypass they agreed to build. And it's not the bypass that supposedly was budgeted for. Theoretically, the bypass went all the way from where it starts up by the Great Tree Valley, all the way down across Turnpike Acres to the post office. The exits and entrances for the turnpike were supposed to be on the other side of the turnpike. They were supposed to close the exit on this side, on the village side, but they didn't want to build another bridge. How, they built a three-lane bridge. Where else in the state of Maine can you find a three-lane bridge with two lanes of traffic in one direction and one lane in the other? So we need to continue, and the council will continue, to put pressure on them to change these things. And I think that they will get changed eventually, but it's gonna take more years before that happens. As to Adam's question, weren't we surprised when none of you showed up when we did the ordinance? You know, I wish I could say I was surprised, but we sit here night after night after night. And there may be a few people watching us on TV, but we get very little feedback. Sandy told you that over five thousand people voted for...
Four thousand.
The comp plan?
Four thousand voted in favor.
Four thousand voted in favor, but over five thousand people came out to vote. I've been elected to this chair twice with less than five hundred votes. And I'm gonna get elected next week if I vote for myself, because nobody is running against me. We have many positions on the council committees that help to run our community that are vacant. We firmly believe, I buy into the whole we the people thing. We're our government. If we don't do this work, then all we can do is either hire it out, or it doesn't get done. So there are some constraints that we're up against. I think the council has developed, you may not be aware, but the council's developed a sort of a task list. As people bring ideas to us, as we come up with ideas, we discuss them amongst ourselves. If they get enough votes that it's something that we should do, it goes on the list, and we start to work on it. We've been keeping that list for six years now, and we've gotten quite a few things done. But what surprised me, when I built my own house thirty-five years ago in Gray, my wife and I did, and I thought we'd never get out of the basement. It took us months, actually, the Skillings dug the hole for us. And it was like, we're never gonna, how are we gonna build the rest of the house? We ain't getting above ground yet. I feel very much the same way, sitting here in this job. I mean, at one point in time, there were, I'm told, nine gas stations in the village. We're down to fewer gas stations, but we still have a lot. Everybody wants to diversify our tax base so that it doesn't come at the expense of the few businesses that we have, or just residential properties. Those are some of the things that we're trying to change, and the changes are coming slowly, but like Sandy, I do agree that they will come. Eventually, Yarmouth Road is gonna get fixed. Eventually, Main Street is gonna get fixed. That work now, they're talking about a combined cost of thirty-one...
Thirty-five million.
Thirty-five million dollars to replace the stormwater system out here, to replace all of the old water pipes, and to leave room in the future for, it might someday be needed, sewer, or gas, or anything else that might come to town, that we'll be able to do it more cost-effectively, because when this work gets done, everyone will be in their lane. We won't have pipes going all over the place. So I'm sorry that I'm kind of going off on that, but it doesn't surprise me, I'm afraid, that nobody showed up. I can't explain to you why the communication didn't work. We did more communication on this ordinance than I think we've done on any other ordinance we've done. Now, you can sign up for the town newsletter. And that newsletter will give you a link to every single thing the council does, and every single agenda that we have. You can go to the town website anytime before our meetings, and you can click on the agenda. And it'd take you less than a minute to go down the list and see if there's anything there you think you need to come out and tell us about. I bet I've had less than a dozen phone calls in the six years that I've been on the council. And maybe twice that many emails over the years. So those four hundred people that elect, or four or five hundred people that elected me, that's all I got to go on, is that there's four or five hundred people in town that thinks that Dan McGuire can fill this chair and do a reasonably good job. When we need the participation, and you're all right, is back at the beginning. When we're starting to blue-sky it and to find out what the issues are. Be quite honest with you, until you guys told me about the issue on Depot Road and Yarmouth Road, I wasn't aware of that one. That one was news to me, that that turn is a difficult turn for you guys to make. Would have been great to have that information last fall, when it could have been part of the discussion. As, to some extent, I understand it's hard maybe to turn on Depot Road, but you're gonna have to get out on one fifteen and speed up somewhere, whether you do it at the end of Short Mayo or you do it at the end of Depot Road. I understand that turn on Depot Road makes it more difficult. But the heavy work that the truck has to do to get going isn't gonna change. And frankly, I'm not sure that, I mean, Short Mayo is on a curve, so getting on to Short Mayo is easier than getting off Short Mayo onto one fifteen, too. No one would go that way if they were coming into town, but if you're going towards Yarmouth, it would make a lot more sense. I agree with everything that was said tonight about MDOT. We specifically wrote the exemptions into this ordinance so that in case we hadn't thought of everything, we wouldn't shut somebody out. There would still be a way to address that person's needs. If we hadn't thought of everything that we needed to do with this particular ordinance. And that was one of the things that we were in there, that went in there specifically. We've talked about the changes on Brown Street and the fact that when those changes go through, I don't think any truck is ever gonna come down, even if it was allowed, would ever come down Brown Street again, coming into the village. Because it's, you're gonna come down to...
A square with Hancock.
Thank you, Hancock Street. Basically, Brown Street and Hancock Street are gonna make an intersection. So I appreciate you coming out. I sincerely want to, I don't want people to think that we don't listen, because we, in fact, do. But we are, as Sandy said, trying to balance a lot of disparate, and quite frankly, irreconcilable wants between making it, it can't be one way or the other. There has to be some turf. The last thing I guess I'll say is there are pretty strict criteria for wait-listing a road. Off the top of my head, I can't think of another road in town that we could wait-list. So for the folks that are afraid that all of Mayo Road will get wait-listed, or the folks that are concerned that Waymouth Road will be next on the list, we could never wait-list those roads, because part of the criteria is there has to be a reasonable alternate route. There is obviously no reasonable alternate route if you were to wait-list Waymouth Road, or if you were to wait-list all of Mayo Road. So people can't come to us and say, just because I live on a residential street, I want my road wait-listed. They can come to us and ask us that, but we're not gonna be able to do it, because within the confines of the state's laws, we can't do that. of the state's laws, we can't do that. So, I think I answered most of the big ones that were brought up. I appreciate your time.
Great. Any other comments?
What's reasonable?
Sorry. Nobody can hear you at home, and the public comment is ended, but you're asking what's reasonable?
Yeah.
It needs to be a route that's similar to or next to. So, for example, the Short Shaker with the bypass.
Right.
It's .4 miles, and depending on the time of day, I'm sure it varies between a minute and five minutes, depending on the time of day. I live on Route 26, so I'm well aware of traffic. Not on the Short Shaker. I live on Big Shaker.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have much to add. I think Sandy and Dan covered anything I wouldn't really say, but I do appreciate everyone's thought and input. I also appreciate there is a cost to the businesses here that have spoken tonight, but there's a cost to the residents in this town in regards to safety, the way we currently operate, and that's really my main concern, especially given the example of safety we witnessed this last week with the 13-year-old boy who was injured by a tractor trailer. So, that's my main concern, and I'm comfortable with addressing that through this ordinance.
Thanks. Any comments? Krista?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Thank you, guys, for coming out again.
Thank you for coming out.
Next item on our agenda are action items, and the first one is for the Gray Council. I'm looking for a motion. I'm going to give
You don't have to go home now if you don't want. We've got more to do.
You want to talk?
What did you say? I think you missed a good channel. It's gonna take you a long time to get home now. I gotta go run.
I'm just letting the room clear for those watching at home, so that you can hear me. I'm looking for a motion for the council to fix Monday, October 2, 2023, and Monday, April 1, 2024, as the dates upon each of which one-half of taxes are due and payable, with interest to accrue upon taxes due and unpaid after each such date at the rate of 8% per annum. In accordance with 36 MRSA Section 506, the tax collector and town treasurer are authorized to accept prepayment or decline prepayment of taxes not yet committed or prior to any due date and pay no interest thereon. In accordance with 36 MRSA Section 506-A, a taxpayer who pays an amount accepted by the tax collector and town treasurer in excess of that finally assessed shall be repaid the amount of overpaid plus interest from the date of overpayment at the rate of 4% per annum, and hereby authorizes and directs said tax collector/ treasurer pursuant to Title 36, Main Revised Statutes, Annotated Section 906, to apply any tax payment received from an individual as payment for any property tax against outstanding or delinquent taxes due on said property in chronological order beginning with the oldest unpaid tax bill, provided, however, that no such payment may be applied to any tax for which an abatement application or appeal is pending unless approved in writing by the taxpayer.
I need to drink water. I'm just listening to you.
Second.
Marty quietly says, "So moved." Any comments?
No.
All right. Krista?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Next, and is that why Lauren?
Yes.
She has a crack at poor Lauren.
Sorry, Lauren.
She's also here for item three, I think.
One more, yeah. So, the next one is for, I'm looking for the motion for the council to award the contract for construction of a recreational trail on the town-owned, quote, Gateway Parcel Tax Map 35 Lot 403-027-000 to Skidsteer Services LLC of Naples, Maine, and grant authority to the town manager with input from the RFP review team regarding the reduced scope to enter into a contract for this work not to exceed $52,877.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Nate?
Just want to make sure that you all know that there's a memo on page 24 from Kristin, who's here to join you for a conversation if you have any questions. We discussed it, and the Skidsteer firm understands that their proposal was over our budget, but they are agreeable to negotiating with the team and with Kristin as the lead on a scope of work that fits our budget. So, I'm happy to defer to Kristin on any questions you might have.
Any questions? Dan?
Yeah, Kristin, do you have any sense of how the scope of work will have to be reduced?
Yes, Kristin Zeskey, Town Planner. I am looking at what the planning board proved was a reduced connection due to some concerns about the crosswalk. So, the connection that heads out to connect with what's actually on the property panel is being eliminated, the one that comes out near that large tree
Yep.
On the gateway property. So, that's eliminated, and then to further reduce the scope to come into our budget, because the bids came in much higher than we expected. We did speak with our facilities director, Mo, who has currently agreed to help us by mowing some of the path, so we can reduce the portions that are actually paved with the gravel. So, the path will exist within the site, but there will be sections that are reduced significantly. Will kind of end, if you recall, that road type of entrance that comes in, like if you take the crosswalk from panel, go across the first option that you have to enter the gateway property
Yep.
That will become a room eventually. That piece will be that connection, and that will be the only connection along that part of the sidewalk on that part of Main Street, and that it'll go around in a loop. We'll be reducing the area originally proposed with the gazebo area, and reducing some of the additional features there. We're also going to be pushing further into the woods a little bit to avoid any potential for conflict with playing fields should that come to fruition as well. So, there is reduction in scope, not only with the planning board decision, but also with trying to bring it into budget, and we may be able to face it in the future to build out the other pieces that the planning board originally contemplated.
Great. Thank you very much. Yeah, I think that, I think that's a very reasonable solution to the problem. I think this whole process actually has been stellar to the extent that it's gone through a bunch of renditions, but it, sort of each roadblock along the way, you know, there were a lot of different people involved, and a lot of different ideas were just tossed out as, you know, potential solutions. And two things. One, who knows where good ideas come from until you hear them. And the second one is, having a process where people feel comfortable enough that they can just throw out their ideas there, even if it might seem kind of far-fetched, often will spur the solution. So, I want to thank everybody who's been involved in getting this this far, because I think it's just worked out really well.
Krista?
Yeah, thanks, Kristin, for going over potential scope changes. I'm noticing in the bid, there was inclusion of fencing, and then also landscaping and plantings, which are adding to the cost significantly. And in your memo, the second to last paragraph on page 24, you talk about volunteers or donors who may want to participate in the landscaping aspects of the trail design. And I'm just wondering if that also was one of the scope changes, that we would be eliminating the plantings from this design firm and relying on volunteer support for that?
Yeah, we are, we're going to have to be having this conversation, as Nate mentioned, about where we can come into what we have for a budget, once this contractor is chosen. We do believe it's likely going to require that we won't be able to do most of the plantings that we expected to do. We did make some discussions with the butters that we wanted to be good to our word on, including the fencing that was discussed, and the berm and some of the planting along the Set 15 budding property. So, those are highlighted. Those are really important pieces.
Okay.
First piece, that and getting the trail dead down to the extent that we can. But yeah, a lot of the plantings are going to have to be in a subsequent phase just because of the budget.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. I was most curious about the fencing also, so that's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't quite understand the fencing until I did the site walk.
Okay.
And there's a couple of properties where their backyards have kind of slipped on to the gateway property, and they have some actually really great trees right there, too. And so, I think the fencing kind of helps secure their backyard, but also takes advantages of some plantings already there. So, it hopefully will work out. Any questions from you, Marty?
I saw that there's a grant for $66,000.
Yep. And so, the difference would be the matching is, or the design piece. Kristin? Design piece.
Okay.
Correct. Yes, you had created, the council previously approved the design work, that's a bigger techniques, which I think is around 14,000. So, the figure we're looking to work with for the construction is the back yard.
The remaining amount.
Okay. Thank you.
I was just gonna say, we can't do anything about it now, because the budget's already set and done, but we could use some of the money in the future to either extend or complete portions of the trail that we won't with this project, so.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yep. Anything else?
Mm-mm.
Yep.
Krista?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Next item on the agenda.
Thanks, Kristin.
Thank you, Kristin.
Thanks, Kristin.
Good night, Lynn.
Good night, Lynn.
Next item on the agenda, I'm looking for a council to authorize the town manager to sign the quitclaim deed to Michael E. Perkins for map and lot 5059-037-028-001 of the tax assessor's maps of the town of Gray.
So moved.
Second?
And I just want to say that this is something that I actually really enjoy doing.
Yeah.
And in particular, this specific case.
Yeah.
I think Dan and I have been involved in this one for several years, and I am just really overjoyed to see that things have turned around, and would be, I'm very pleased to see this on our agenda this evening. Any other comments?
I just, I don't have as much history with this as you and Dan, but I just want to commend the young man for making these payments after such a trying time in his life. I certainly, that's commendable.
Great. Lauren, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I have been too.
No, I just wanted to make sure I was available for questions if you had any, but Mr. Perkins is really looking forward to getting this property back.
Great.
And moving forward, yes.
Yes, a good day for everyone.
Yep. We're looking forward to giving it to him.
I will go right to roll. Krista?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Congratulations, Michael. Next item on the agenda is, I'm looking for, and thank you, Lauren, I'm looking for a motion for the council
Thank you.
To approve Town Manager Nate Rudy's appointment to the ECO Main Board of Directors.
So moved.
Second.
And this is temporary?
This is temporary. The former finance director served in this position. There is a vote tomorrow morning on an action item for ECO Main that I would like to participate in. I fully intend to pass this duty along to someone else as soon as possible. I enjoy the company of the ECO Main Board folks. They're really great folks, and they're very diligent, but as you know, I have lots of other duties to attend to.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments? Krista?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Next item on the agenda is for the council to approve the proposed carryforwards to FY24.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, the memo includes a table of all of the historical carryforward requests that have been made but have not been fully dispersed. It's quite a long list, but this is the list of items that you have improved pages 40 and 41 in previous meetings and previous budget discussions. Just want to get it all down on paper and ask you to, again, approve the carryforward of this. There may be some additional carryforward requests from FY23, particularly from Public Works and Buildings and Grounds, as they get to the end of the year and we just can't get certain things done.
Mm-hmm.
And I will bring those to you as a separate request.
Great. Any questions? Dan?
Just a comment. Thank you very much for this presentation. It's nice to have it buttoned up like this. I think you've set the standard we need to keep moving with.
Do this again next year.
Yeah, absolutely.
But would also be good, I think, to add this to the budget books
I agree.
Each year.
Well, and I just wondered how, as we go forward, you plan, will you just add and subtract from this as time goes on, or will you create a new one for each fiscal year?
What I'd like to do is use this as the template, and one of the things that I'm hoping for, as we've changed the structure of the administrative department, is to give you more forecasting, and more reporting, and more details like this from the finance department. And I intend to work on that to make sure that you get more regular updates of this as we disperse funds throughout the years.
Okay.
And my goal is, as you know, our goal, the staff's goal, is to get these projects done, except for the sinking funds, of course, which carry on. Get these done, move on, because there's always more work to do. We're just catching up. There's been a lot going on. I commend, you know, particularly the Buildings and Grounds Director, Mo, has done a tremendous amount of work on getting the buildings repaired and to a place where we're maintaining them. There's clearly a lot more to do. There's a lot of roads to be paved. We've had some effects from COVID on all of that, finding contractors, but we hope we're moving forward, and there's a lot of diligent pursuit of this activity from Buildings and Grounds, Public Works, the Planning Department. So, I just want to tell everyone how much I appreciate that, and appreciate your all's support for these carryforwards.
Krista?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment for people who might be watching, that these are not new expenses. These are expenses from prior years, which we've already collected revenues for. We're just carrying forward the funds so that they may be expended when the project's being completed.
Good catch.
Yeah. And then, I did have a couple of follow-up questions on a couple of items under Public Buildings, Nate. I know that under our current budget, we have a warrant up for a lot of work on the panel complex, including the septic and the basketball port. I'm just wondering if we still need the funds that we've set aside here for those?
I think they were counted in Mo's budget
Yes.
Towards the big project.
That's correct.
Okay, so we are still using
You gotta carry them forward in order for him to have access.
I just thought I would flag it, because I wasn't sure.
Thank you for asking. This is his fresh list of carryforwards for items that he has in process that have not yet been completed, and without this, the other budget for this year would not be sufficient.
Got it. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Any other questions? Krista?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
I'm also a yes.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the report from the council chair, my very last one. I want to remind everyone of two June events. One, the Long Stay 5K, which is held on June 21 at Libby Hill Trails at 6:30 PM. GNG students run for free. Registration is open now. This is the largest fundraiser for Gray community endowment, so if you love the trails, please sign up. For more information, you can go to the Libby Hill Trails website. The second is our Gray Community Day, which will be held on Saturday, June 24, from 10 to 2 PM here at Panel. And this is a celebration of community volunteerism, and will feature kids activities, information booths for volunteer opportunities, and a chili cook-off, which the rec committee has a member who is entering chili, so the gauntlet has been thrown down.
The other department.
That's right. Step up. No cost to join the fun, just show up. Schedule for us, just a reminder that the last workshop of this council session is next Monday at 5 PM, and I have sent the outstanding list to Krista for future meeting agendas, so it is all hers now.
Variation on the carryforward, do you?
That's the carryforward vote, right there. And I'm working to coordinate time with Kyle to transition the tracking workbook into Teams, and to work through archiving my email and council social media. As everyone knows by now, my second term will be ending next Tuesday on Election Day, and I want to take a minute to say how honored I have been to represent the residents of Gray and to work on their behalf. I am grateful to Lynn Gallagher, and really surprised at her visit tonight, but I appreciate it, for her, I'm thankful for her for teaching me the ropes, to Bruce Foché for being my partner as chair and vice-chair for the time he was on the council, and for being a voice of reason, always. I enjoyed working with Ann, who is so experienced and knowledgeable about all levels of governance, and is an amazing problem solver, and I have enjoyed meeting and working with new people like Marty, who I probably would have not crossed paths with.
Probably not.
I want to extend a special thanks to Dan for sharing my journey from the beginning. He is thoughtful in his deliberations and analysis, and I have enjoyed our conversations immensely. And I want to recognize Krista for all of her hard work, which started on the Comprehensive Plan Committee, and for her passion to make Gray a better place for everyone. It's been a real pleasure. I've been pleased to get to know you. I want to also thank the staff I want to also thank the staff who have been patient, as I have learned, the ins and outs of local government and dealt with a tremendous amount of change and work in a short period of time, even though it seems like a long period of time. And to Nate, who brought new perspective to and jumped right into a large volume of work that was underway. We have some really wonderful people working for the town of Gray. I have, I leave feeling pride in many of the accomplishments achieved in my six years on the council, including the municipal solar array, which I absolutely really, really love. The new comprehensive plan, the Village Master Plan, the purchase of the Village Gateway property, which I thought was a huge step forward for the town, and the Open Space Plan, same. The updated bike pad and complete street policy, along with so many other updates to policies and procedures. The Libby Hill Trails Maintenance Agreement. The many grants obtained to do important work and our ability to dig out of the financial hole we were in and maintain a stable mill rate for many years. And the update to the Route one hundred South Tiff, which was the starting point to the now almost finished Yarmouth Road infrastructure plans, which, when combined with the Main Street project, will transform the village. It's just a matter of when. The work continues, and I wish you all well in the next session and encourage residents to please stay engaged and to continue to provide support for and feedback on the efforts to realize the comprehensive plan, the vision, and the goals. So thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll go to the report from the town manager.
Thank you, counselor, and thank you for everything that you have done. Counsel, do you have any questions about my written report? Yeah, counselor.
I'm just, I'm just noting that due to holidays and municipal elections and a staff training day that were kind of, were closed a lot in like one week span, I'm just wondering if you have any concerns about that.
It is difficult to schedule staff training day, and we recognize that being on the same day as Juneteenth, it does create a strain. We do our best with what we can, what we have and what we can do. We certainly don't want to inconvenience anyone, and we apologize in advance if we do. We, we are trying to schedule training days and things like that so they don't coincide with these weeks. It's just this year, there was no other day that really worked out.
Sure. What is the communications plan for communicating that to the public?
I'd like to work with Kyle on getting some messaging out the week before that those two days will be closed. And then we'll post it on the doors like we always do.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out.
Sure.
Any other questions?
No.
I have a, I'm curious if you'd share the agenda or the plan for the staff training day.
I will when it's done.
Yep. Thank you.
John is working on that diligently. And I have a couple of extra comments, just briefly. Our USM intern, Abby Davis, is starting work this week, and we welcome her. We're really excited to have her. This is something that was offered to us for the second time as a free internship.
Nice.
For Gray, so I certainly appreciate the partnership from the folks at USM, who I've been working with over a couple of years, and Peter Crichton, who's one of the board members there, who's helped me access this program. And also just want to note that you have, I've given you both the postal mailing that will be going out to Gray citizens as early as tomorrow, which is a two, a one-page back and front and back, and then there's a four-page budget summary. I guess the flyer is the executive summary, and then there's a four-page summary that my best effort working with staff and council members on summarizing the budget proposal for voters. I will ask the clerk's office to have some copies of this in the outside, in the polling area for our absentee voters as well.
Great, thank you. Next item is committee reports, and we'll start with Krista.
Thank you. GP COG Executive Committee met on April twenty-third, and we reviewed and approved content that was going to be presented at their, excuse me, May twenty-third. Reviewed and approved content that was being presented at the May twenty-fifth GP COG Summit. The Resiliency Committee rescheduled their meeting from May twenty-fifth to this coming June eighth due to my attendance at the GP COG Annual Summit that afternoon. And unfortunately, we also had notification that Ann Bugala has resigned. So currently, we do not have a quorum. We have two active members. One of our active members is running for a council seat, and we will be left with one active member, most likely after the June thirteenth election. So if anyone is interested in resiliency work in our community.
Is your one volunteer going to be at the Gray Community Day?
Yes, she is.
Okay, good.
I'm going to go also. We're gonna hopefully work a booth at least. Yeah, so hopefully, if anyone's interested, we have a lot of stuff going on that we would love input on from residents. The ordinance advisory commit, committee reconvened on May thirtieth. We had a really good conversation around the self-storage ordinance that we're reviewing again. There was, I believe, consensus, Doug might correct me, that they would like to retain the three-hundred-foot setback for businesses that would like to implement self-storage facilities. I know Doug is also looking into some flexibility around that, so we'll see where we land ultimately.
On Monday.
Right. And then we also had a presentation by Doug regarding kind of an interim comprehensive plan land use overlay map that would basically overlay in the village, in particular, our current zoning so that we could more precisely determine what was appropriate going forward with the comprehensive plan while we still work on amending our zoning ordinance to reflect that and also
Good idea.
other ordinances. And we're planning to meet again on, I believe, June fifteenth.
Thank you. Dan?
The planning board has not met since our last meeting, but there was a, a sitewalk yesterday evening for the second phase of the Stillwater Pines subdivision. I had two takeaways from the council standpoint on that. One of them was a breakdown in communication between the town, the water district, and the, and the original residents of Woodcock Drive. I spoke to several last night who said that they were unable to get on Town Water back when the road was being constructed, and one of them recently has, two, one of them has recently gotten on Town Water, which required them to dig up a brand-new street and cost the residents sixty-five hundred dollars. It would have been significantly cheaper if they had signed up for Town, had been able to do that construction before. So I think that that was a miss. It is in the the plans for the subdivision that that was supposed to happen, but I think just as part of the CZA, so that was a miss. The other one that was for me is that there's, are some struggles between combining the existing Woodcock Drive Homeowners' Road Association and the new Stillwater Pines Association. The developer has told me last night that there, he has registered the association with the Secretary of State and that there are officers currently for that group. He's not going to turn over the association until Phase Two is complete, which makes perfect sense. But I think that I, it was my understanding anyways when we were talking about the CZA that the, the work to combine the two associations would have been done more upfront, and some of that would have been worked out, excuse me, prior to this. So those are just two things that I noticed. The other thing, just to let everybody know, for Phase One, it costs about just shy of seventy thousand dollars to do the final paving of the road. That association ultimately someday will have to pay, repave that, resurface that road. The developer thinks that they won't have to do that for twenty years. I think that's hopeful. But even if they had to do it fifteen years from now, they would have to collect a minimum of a hundred and, well, probably a hundred and seventy-five dollars a year from all thirty residents for fifteen years in order to save up enough money to pay this year's cost of that. And I'm pretty sure fifteen years from now, they won't be able to get that work done for seventy-five thousand dollars. So for me, it spoke to, oh, that's very kind of you. Thank you. I'm already drunk too. I guess we've done a lot of chatting tonight. The, it speaks to me about the cost on these associations to maintain their roads. And so we've talked a bit about finding a way for road associations that do have to pave their roads and strike their roads to piggyback on the town's bids for those services. I feel confident that if we put our heads together, we should be able to figure out a way. I certainly would expect for them, you know, to be able to pay for that work upfront, that there would, you know, there would be a lot of conditions on that, obviously, that wouldn't require, it would be the responsibility of the association and not the town. There may be some legal issues there, too. I'm not a lawyer. There'll pretend to be one on TV. But I would hope that we could sort that out, because it is, it is the town that has required them to pave that road. And so I think the town has some responsibility for, you know, without cost to the taxpayer of making that job a little easier for them. I think it'll also help undercut some of the resistance that, you know, we're being approached more and more by road associations for assistance from the town because it is getting expensive.
It's expensive for the town. We recognize it.
It's expensive for everybody. So anyways, that's just, that was, I thought, good information from that sitewalk.
Marty?
Okay, the, the zoning board met on May twenty-fourth to discuss administrative and procedural issues. Brad Fogg, the chair of that board, wants to meet with Nate to, to, to get a class on the legal aspects of the zoning board from our town attorney. And there'll be, there will not be a meeting in June of the zoning board. In addition to Dan's report on the planning board, the planning board meets this week, Thursday night, the eighth, at seven o'clock, to discuss the Napolitano zoning permit and the Avesta amendment. The Blueberry Festival Committee met, met this morning. They gave out these palm cards. They're pretty interesting. There'll be, there'll, there'll be an off-site workshop on June twentieth. The meeting off-schedule for July eleventh will be at eleven o'clock instead of ten o'clock. Tie-dyes will be sold at the Blueberry Festival for fifteen dollars. And parking will be handled by the, parking across the street will be handled by the, the the Class of Twenty-four, and they're asking for, for a five-dollar donation.
Nice.
Nice fundraiser.
That's a great idea.
The, the Finance Committee, no meetings are scheduled.
Doug, you want to make a clarification? Because I feel like you are.
Yeah, thank you. Doug Wetzner, Planning Director. I was talking with the planner Kristin today. The applicants for Avesta have indicated that they're probably going to postpone or going to reach out to the Avesta residents and try to get something on the website for parties that were notified that they, that that was on the agenda. But it appears as though it's going to be tabled.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
For me, rec committee met last night, and we reviewed program updates, which included advising that the summer camp spots are all full. Not surprising, but what was surprising is we only have one family on the waitlist, and that's very unusual. And they believe that is a direct result of the new collaboration with MSAD fifteen. Rec will now provide an afternoon summer program to kids attending the summer, school summer program in the morning. And this will take place at Dunn School and has added substantial capacity for parents. So kids will go to summer school in the morning. Everybody goes to Dunn in the afternoon, and the rec will, the department will have staff over there waiting to provide rec afternoon. There will also be an invitation coming to the council to attend an open house of the new South Portland Skateboard Park, which, my understanding, is immense and amazing. It had a very high dollar amount attached to it, over five hundred thousand. But it's a good example to be able to go visit and get an idea of what options are available. And, and that is actually scheduled for June twenty-first, so you'll probably get something from Anthony on that soon. Our next, the next meeting for the rec committee is on July third. Open Space meets tomorrow at six via Zoom in the Dry Mill Schoolhouse. We held a work session at the school last Thursday. We have another one set for this Thursday. And this is in preparation of our open house, which will be held this coming Saturday, June tenth, from eleven to two PM. The Gray Historical Society has set up a lovely display as well. Light refreshments will be served. There's no RSVP. People who are interested in seeing the results of the repair work and the new layout are welcome to just swing on by. Our next official meeting is set for June nineteenth at four PM. Next item on the agenda is council correspondence and activities, and we'll start with Krista.
Okay. On May, oh my gosh, what month is it? May twenty-third, I attended the last South Portland Budget Workshop of their city council on behalf of GP COG with two other member communities, where I testified in support of South Portland remaining a member of GP COG. And they did vote four to three to remain a member. It was a little, little tight, but just barely made it. So that was good news all around for membership in Greater Portland Council of Governments. On May twenty-fourth, I met with Doug to discuss planning for the Yarmouth Road Forum that was happening on June first. And also, May twenty-fourth and May twenty-sixth, I met with Nate to go over and create, help create the budget flyer that's getting mailed and posted on the website. And June first, I participated in GP COG's Let's Connect Greater Portland Radio Show with Jared Maxfield of Wyndham and Bill Nemitz to talk about the local, importance of local news for local democracy. And it's available streaming on YouTube and Spotify if anyone's interested. We had a really good conversation. And then I also received an email from Adam Wilkinson, which he mentioned in his comments earlier regarding the shortshaker road weight limit and when that ordinance was first passed. I did reply to him on Sandy's behalf while she was out of town, indicating that it was passed on November fifteenth, but I did fail to indicate that it's effective thirty days after that. So thank you for clarifying that this evening. And then I just want to take a moment to thank Sandy for her time and energy on this council and for the town. I, I hear from so many people about how, you know, impactful you have been in your time here.
Thank you.
I know you continue, will continue to be impactful as a resident, but I think, you know, with a lot of, your shoes are hard to fill, and we will do our best to continue the work.
Thank you very much, Krista. I appreciate that. Dan?
I exchanged a couple of emails and had a conversation with Adam Wilkinson, too. That's really all I had for correspondence this, this past section. I also want to add that though typically the town, the, the town council chair is finished at the last meeting, Sandy's not going to get off that easy. We're gonna, we're gonna drag this out as long as we can. We can't take it past next Tuesday, but we can go right up to the line.
We're gonna schedule something for Tuesday morning.
Tuesday morning, Tuesday afternoon.
Yeah, it, it has, it has been a, a pleasure to work with you the last six years, and I will, will miss your presence at the council meetings. I think that one of the accomplishments that really never makes any of the lists is just the managing to, to build some consistency over time and to create a process to hand off one, because each, each council is a new entity. And the new council is not bound to what the old council was working on. But through the process with, you know, Sandy, myself, and some of the other people that Sandy mentioned earlier, you know, we were able to create a process that worked. And I think, you know, when the dog chases its tail, it still moves slowly across the room.
A little dizzy sometimes.
I think, I think that we're getting further across the room with each revolution of the council. And you have, you've had a major part to play in that by keeping the task list all these And, and you have, you've had a major part to play in that by keeping the, the task list all these years. And then finally, I think just from the standpoint of your attention to detail, you've definitely raised the bar, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I appreciate the time I've had to spend with you.
Thanks. I appreciate that. Marty?
No correspondence, but uh, but thank you for all your help.
Thanks a lot, Marty. I'll miss our little texts. Uh, for me, communication, I shared most of mine already during the public comment, um, public hearing, but I also did receive an email from Scott Liberty related to the moratorium, which he felt was uh not valid. But we did share some feedback with him on that, and I think he's all set now. And with that, I am looking for a motion to adjourn at eight fifty PM.
So moved.
Second.
Krista?
Yes.
Dan?
No.
Marty?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you, Dan. That's very sweet.
Doug, that will be noted for the record.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.